Okay. Good evening, I'm reconvening the, I didn't even pay attention, the October 7th Board of Supervisors meeting, and we go right into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please be recognized, give us your district and your name, and we will have a five-minute limit on public comment. Yes, me? Anita Ramos, Hampton District, two quickies. The Rapidan, Rappahannock, Rappahannock-Rapidan Commission, part of what their long couple of pages of things today that you all got mentioned, water. Right now, we've got, we've had water, but this summer, we didn't. Long, long ago, a number of years ago, a number of people got together because the Board of Supervisors asked them to do a study on the water situation here in Rappahannock County, and that's in our docs someplace, but it might be wise to read it again sometime, because what it was telling everybody was that the amount of water we have is getting less and less. And we've just seen what happened in Orange when they were in a bad situation with their water supply. We don't have that same kind of problem, but any of the farmers around here will tell you about the years that they've had a tough time getting water for their cattle, horses, sheep, goats, et cetera. So please, keep that in your minds, somewhere, because I, it was a subject dear to my husband's heart, and he was involved in that group. So please, just give it, give it a moment of your time sometime or another and read it. Second of all, you're going to be talking about speakers, and one of the things you're saying is you will not, you don't want people to yield to other people to speak, and I've mentioned this before, I think if somebody comes before you representing a group of people, and they are here to say that they want to give somebody extra time, then I'd rather, and you all would rather hear a whole argument about something once, rather than from six people, if you know it's coming from all of them. So anyway, that's, that's where I'm from on that subject. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, me?
I think it's time to have some fun. So, a long, long time ago, my grandfather used to make these muffins, and it got to be so, if he didn't have some ingredients, he would just put other stuff in it. So my dad would say, oh, Sheila Gressender, Hampton District, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, your worn shirt.
Yeah. So my dad would say to my mother, what did your grandfather put in those nutty buns today? So it was grandpa's nutty buns, okay? So my whole thing is, sometimes, what is, what do you have to do to get the job done? So it's fall, and people are talking about making apple pies. So I thought about it, and one of my favorite recipes was an apple pie with an eight-inch, for an eight-inch pie crust, and you have certain ingredients, and then you're supposed to have six large apples. Well, what if you don't have six large apples? So I went to an apple store, and so if you had, I'm sorry, eight apples, I'm sorry, eight apples. So if you, if you didn't have eight apples, if you had six, what were you gonna do? Well, you could always do like, three more, so you'd have like, six, seven, nine apples or ten to make your pie. So my point is, I think sometimes, I want to be able to support small businesses, and sometimes I think it's, what does it take to get the job done, to be able to provide a welcoming environment for some of our businesses that might be struggling, and perhaps they just might need a slight twist of thinking outside the box as to maybe how we could maybe work for them to help things get done. In the meantime, I love visuals, so everybody gets an apple.
Thank you. I was hoping you were gonna walk.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thanks a lot.
It's amazing, thank you, Sheila.
So think of the apples, think of how we're gonna help businesses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You wanna eat this now?
Just make sure you eat it on your mic.
Crunch.
Anyone else?
One for my horse.
Harry Wise. There's no one else in the courtroom during public comment?
That's Glavine Homes people.
Both of them are, okay. Both of them are online, are with Glavine, so we can close public comment. And moving right along, presentations by Glavine Homes Monthly Board Update.
Oh, just by way of quick introduction, the agreement that we have with Glavine Homes includes a requirement for them to provide an update at each board meeting. That was a request of the board during negotiations of that agreement, and so here we are at really the first meeting after they started in on their work, and Andrew Moore is online, and I think he's prepared to provide an update. And Andrew, we didn't discuss this ahead of time, do you need to share your screen, or is this just oral?
Gary, this time it's just oral. I'll learn work product so far as tabular data and some background study information, so yeah, don't need to share screen.
Okay, take it away.
All right, well, thank you. Really, pleasure to be with you. This is our, as Gary said, our first, we anticipate being a series of monthly updates on courthouse project. Again, my name is Andrew Moore, I'm principal with Glavine Homes Architecture, and I have with me tonight John Spain, who is the project manager, and depending on how things flow over the course of time, you may hear from one or both of us at a given meeting, so I just wanted to introduce John as well. So we've been hard at work getting started on the project. In late August, our team met with the users of the courts system, we met with the Supreme Court, and the combined general district court, and J and D R court judges and clerks. We also met with the sheriff's department, and with the Commonwealth attorney, to discuss their current facilities, and to get some high-level and some detail-level feedback programmatically. As you might anticipate, one of the top issues that was articulated by all of the users was inadequate security in the building. It goes without, almost without saying that, you know, one of the basic tenants of courts designs is the separation of different interest groups within the courtroom, so you don't have crossing paths of prisoners, and judges, and public, and credentialed staff, so you know, that's sort of a fundamental aspect of courts designs, with those pathways separate and secure. And they're all mixing right now, as you know, in the current court facility. In fact, we had some interesting anecdotes coming particularly from the sheriff's office about physically restraining and separating different parties during court days. So a lot of need there, and we are consolidating the information that we were given in previous space studies, I'm aware of Allen Wilson, as well as their own courts expert trainer who's bringing their expertise to bear, and that would be consolidated into a kind of theoretical program, that then we will apply in two ways as we dive into concept design in just a minute. We also have been working on assessing existing conditions in terms of their physical form and dimension. We are not assessing the existing buildings in terms of their physical condition, that was previously done by another consultant, so we're just building on that work. But what we don't have is accurate as-built conditions to develop our concept designs from. So the entire site has been laser scanned, which is generating the three-dimensional digital model of the, of the site, plus all of the existing buildings, so we've got Doc, back on Door 12. And then our civil engineer and site consultant, Jim Barry, is currently working on topographic survey that's started, but they're running since rain delay, so we're initially waiting on getting the final work product from that, but we don't anticipate that delay affecting our overall schedule. So we've been developing the initial program, as I mentioned, and also looking carefully at the Jimmy Spring Court courthouse, so we got ours to make sure that we're aligning to those guidelines. And then we're beginning our conceptual design, and that concept design work is taking, taking us to simultaneous structures, so we are looking at a new construction option that will be located on the courthouse screen, and then a second option, which is a renovation addition design, and we plan to show those two concepts in parallel with as much of an apples-to-apples comparison as possible. Our current schedule is that we are going to be producing a first round of concepts, which will basically be floor plan based at the end of October, so the month of October is when we're doing the heavy lifting on the concept design from a plan standpoint. So late October for that presentation, and then we will be doing, developing exterior elevations for both concepts to follow. Looking out a little further, the first time the Board of Supervisors plan to see the concept designs is in December, and then that builds toward a presentation to the community in January. So that's a, kind of a summary of where we are, I'd be happy to take any questions and try to answer them.
Mr. Holmes, thank you very much. My name is Kier Witson, and I happen to represent the district in which the town of Washington is located, so I guess maybe that gives me privilege to go first. One thing I just wanted to understand more clearly, I heard you say that you are not conducting a condition evaluation of the buildings, but that you're building on the work of others, but then you said, you're not clear on the, I thought I heard you say the as-built condition of the buildings, and I just wonder if you could clarify what all that means, recognizing that none of us are architects.
Kier, yeah. So the previous study, that was under Allen Wilson, included a physical conditions assessment of each of the buildings, so you know, the structural condition, the exterior envelope and so forth. So there's no reason for us to revisit that part. What we don't have from Allen Wilson era work is a dimensional record of physical conditions, so there's the size scale and relative position of each of the buildings to each other, as well as the topographic survey work that you very soon. So the existing conditions that I'm talking about are the physical conditions that we will be using for the concept designs going forward.
I got it. And so it was just the use of the word "conditions" that threw me off, so it's more dimensional, and then relative location among all the buildings, okay.
Mr. Moore, this is Van Carney. Thank you for the, for the presentation. I just have a question about the timeline, I think if I recall, you said that design would be done mid-December, conceptual design mid-December, and there'd be a presentation in January, is that correct?
Yeah, so the very, there's some more detailed milestones that we can share, and Gary can share with you, but the high-level milestones that are most relevant, I think, for tonight's discussion is that the month of October is devoted to basically our block planning, what we call block planning, concept design, which is taking the blocks of space that are coming from our BURRING study, laying them physically onto the site, and we're doing that in two options, the new build option, and then the renovation addition option. And that leads to a presentation to the Planning Oversight Committee in late October. Then after that, in November, we will be working towards taking comments, incorporating those into the concept designs, from a floor plan standpoint, and developing exterior elevations. And then that leads to a December checkpoint where we will present to the Board of Supervisors first, and then in, the current plan is that, after the first week year, we would make a public presentation.
Got it, thank you very much.
So that the block diagram planning is all about those critical adjacencies, where they need to be adjacent, where they shouldn't be adjacent, keeping the paths apart, all of that, sorting that out.
Right.
At a kind of a macro level before they drill into the detail.
Mr. Moore, this is Debbie Donahue, I'm in the Wakefield District, I'm just wondering if you're running into any issues, anything that you could use the board's assistance with, given your first initial efforts.
Well, yeah, thank you very much for the offer. At this point, I think we're in good shape. Gary, of course, has been very accommodating from the county administration standpoint, and all of the building units here have been very generous with their time, and, and very enthusiastic about giving us their, their input. So I think at this point, we're in good shape, and we look forward to presenting some ideas to you at the right time, and getting your input on that.
Excellent, thank you.
I look forward to it as well.
I do too.
So I think the next board meeting's November 4th?
I think you're right.
You thinking about, what's that? November 4th, so think about the level of detail and information that would be appropriate at that time, over the rest of October as well?
Yeah, that's right, so looking sort of synchronizing the schedule, Gary, of course, we'll be checking in with you periodically and frequently before then, but we should have work products coming out of our initial concept designs that would be appropriate to share with the Board of Supervisors at that point.
Excellent. All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you for being available.
No problem, we look forward to seeing you next month.
Likewise.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'm gonna sign off, Gary, unless you have anything else that you need from me.
I think we're good, thank you, Andrew, thank you, John.
Okay. Hey, Kier, good night.
Night.
Moving into our C C U Chapter 30, Meetings Ordinance Amendment.
Just a quick introduction, the board talked about this last month after holding a public hearing, discussed some things that you thought might make sense to change. In particular, there was some concern expressed from citizens about a firm three-minute public comment time limit per person, and the board expressed an interest to perhaps align the language for open-form public comment so that read very similar to how it read for public hearings. Staff did that work for you, and included a second draft bearing, starting 24/10/07, today's date, and you can see 30-5A is for public comment period, and 30-5B is public hearings, and now A tracks very similarly to B, basically stating that the chairperson shall determine the length of time to be allowed to each speaker and parties. The decision allowing time shall take into consideration the expected number of speakers, and while the subject of public comment is not limited to any particular topic, the complexity and controversial nature, if any, of the items included within the adopted agenda, with the goal of offering speaking times to all interested commenters. So that, that's really the only change between the draft that was presented last month and this month. The board is not in a position to adopt any of this, right now, the board, if the board wants to make a change to Chapter 30, continue to provide guidance on this or different language, and then let staff know when it's in a form that you think is appropriate to put back out to public hearing, to hear from the public again.
Well, I'll just say for expedience sake, that I think after last meeting, and then what I felt like, and I called the newspaper to discuss this with them, which was that the headline, and I can't remember exactly what it read, I think it's led people to believe that this is some kind of form of censorship. So for the sake of the expediency, I just want to say that the intention behind this was to take rules that the public already does, and just make them actual rules, so that it protects everybody, which was the suggestion that came out of the retreat. I, my feeling is that this is pushing a snake, a rope up a hill, so I would, I would be fine to just let the community think about this, and think about what it means, and I mean, if anybody else has an appetite to dig into this tonight, I'm absolutely fine to just cogitate.
Well, I'll just, I'll say, I like rules and structure, so I have understood the intent of this from day one. However, I have many, many constituents that are uneasy with this, and I can't, I can't say that they're wrong, so kinda I would jump, I would be in support of, let, as you said, Van, letting this sit a little bit, letting us think about this. I, I'll say upfront, I'm not ready to do anything on this tonight.
Because, and I think it's understandable in the sense that, and this is a discussion that I had when I called the paper, was that I totally get it, that like, it can come off as us trying to minimize what the public is saying, and I, I don't think that the Rappahannock News was saying that, I just was worried about the headline. But it was, it was fine, and we had a good discussion, and I think that because of that, I just, I want the public to understand that this is about protecting the people over there, as much as protecting anybody in our community, and I just don't think there's a rush. So, something folks can think about.
Maybe I'm not remembering correctly, but I think the whole starting point for this was some broad discussion about counties like Alomaro, where, especially during, during the pandemic, and you had people dialing in on Zoom calls, and hijacking meetings, and being disrespectful and saying horrible things. I think maybe, someone correct me if I'm wrong, this was a reaction to that possibility, which I don't think has ever happened here. Every once in a while, we get threatened by people, but it's typically not, I should say, we get threatened by people occasionally, and I think that's the worst that's happened, and, and other than that, I've not heard anyone scream, yell, cuss, or otherwise be ugly toward other members of our community, or members of our board, or the Planning Commission, or any other public bodies. So if whatever's on the books now is sufficient, then, and we haven't seen any evidence of what these bigger counties like Alomaro have experienced, then maybe there's no reason to react. But I think that's where it all started, was kind of protecting, protecting against a situation where someone just goes crazy on a Zoom call. And to that end, I, one thing I did mention, and I think it was shot down pretty quickly, is, and I don't know how this could be executed, either through the Rappahannock News, or through county resources, but my idea was, now that the pandemic is behind us, hopefully, we can livestream the meetings for people to at least be able to watch if they're not able to come to a meeting. Right now, they're only record, I believe they're only recorded, and, and the other option is to join by Zoom, which then presents the opportunity for somebody to hijack a Zoom call, with us obviously always having the right to mute them. But I just wonder, again, and maybe you'll shoot it down again, but the idea of livestreaming the meetings for information purposes, and then in-person attendance, I think maybe requires a higher bar in terms of personal decorum and conduct, and we could cut it that way, just an idea.
I don't remember if that was a technology issue, or what?
I don't know, I mean, we've gotten used to it, and I don't know, I don't know that any, anybody's thought about a specific plan for livestreaming, but I, I know a lot of other jurisdictions do. So I thought perhaps that would solve the fear problem of someone using the cover of their computer and no camera to scream and yell, which again, hasn't happened.
Right.
In fact, the worst behavior's been in person, so, so maybe this is all for naught.
I don't think it hurts to have a conversation to prepare us for the potential of future, I mean, we have people moving in here all the time, that we have no idea where they're from, and Huntley's a prime example of that. So I don't think it hurts us to be having these conversations to prepare for the what-ifs. I do believe having some clear expectations is not a bad thing, I mean, other counties have, you gotta sign in first, you gotta let us know what you're doing, blah, 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 I'm not saying we need to do that.
Right.
But it would be nice to let folks know that it's three or five minutes, it's gonna be set by the chair, you need to be prepared when you walk in the door, this isn't pontificating time, and it's not a two-way conversation for public comment, those kind of issues, I do see that we could set some expectations. But I'm interested, Mr. Goff, do you have any concerns if we do kind of table this for another date? I mean, you've done work, we've got it documented, it would be easy to pick back up on if we found the need.
No, no, we, Gary and I just responded to y'all's requests, and so I looked at a lot of stuff from other jurisdictions as to how they would conduct, have rules for conducted meetings, and what you have there is just a distillation of that. So, but none of it's mandatory, as long as everybody gets the same amount of time, and as your earlier question, they don't have to be residents of Rappahannock. Anybody has a First Amendment, and if you open a public forum, anybody from anywhere can speak on any topic. The only, the only constitutional way you can regulate that is the time that's allotted to each speaker. You can't pick and choose, does he like this?
Okay.
You don't have to have it written down, you just have to engage in that practice.
Sounds like a free speech version of Reed v. Gilbert, right?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly, yeah.
It is, pretty much.
Yeah, that's. You can't discriminate based on?
Everybody's side.
Exactly, and that's literally the discussion that I had with somebody, it was like, it was the same thing, we can regulate, you know, time, but we cannot regulate content, so we're not talking about managing public speech during public comment, that's just not what we're talking about, we're just talking about what we already do, which is, oh, you got five minutes. It's just, if it's not an actual rule, where does it live? So, anyway.
And so are, am I correct, though, that, just thinking back when this whole discussion began, that it, it was a sort of a reaction against these extreme events in other localities? And so where do we end up on that? I mean?
Right, I think the concern was someone would get up there and make outrageous political statements, or, you know, antisemitic, or racist, or, you know, even just obscene things, and when you have that on a forum, that's the risk you have to accept. So, but the only thing you can do, that's, right, and I said, I'm still one of Joe Clements' tools, the red light, green, red, green light, yellow light, red light machine, so that you give a warning, hey, look at dogs, about nothing, and when that red light goes off, you gotta sit down.
Considering we don't have stoplights in Rappahannock County, I think that's kind of extreme, it's, I wouldn't want to be the body that introduces it or responds.
Well, you notice that there is a timer now that's on the board, that when public comment happened, it's just not colored differently.
Right, okay. Yeah, but I do, I wanna, I do want to double down on at least my view, that, I mean, if you look, if you look at Zoom participation in our meetings, it's largely people observing, and no doubt, every once in a while, I would say maybe two out of 10 times you ask, someone raises their quote-unquote Zoom hand. And so I don't believe that changing to a livestream would preclude many people from expressing a opinion, because I believe that most people are using that electronic platform simply to watch. simply to watch the meeting. So.
All right, so I think we're hearing to put this aside and we'll bring it back up should the need arise. Next, contractor yards.
Uh, this is another item that was carried forward from your last meeting. I tried to capture in the narrative of board docs, just a couple of the items that were discussed, just so they weren't lost. And based on the, the draft that was provided by the planning commission, and that is that there, there was some thought that perhaps that the number of 50 vehicles and equipment, perhaps a smaller number should be used for the level one. And it should be clear that we're talking about a combination of vehicles and equipment totaling up to some number. Right now, it wasn't clear if it was 50 vehicles and 50 pieces of equipment, meaning 100 things. And the other was extra concern regarding lighting. And I noted towards the end of that discussion that you have commercial lighting standards, outdoor lighting standards, they wouldn't apply in agriculture or residential setting where a contractor's yard might be located. But you could, as a special requirement for a certain type of contractor's yard, say that those commercial lighting standards that apply in commercial and industrial zones also apply in the case when you have a contractor's yard. And then they would have to follow those. Those are the two main takeaways that I was able to glean from your conversation last month. The high-level discussion was also held as to just how intensive use does the board envision in the community? And is there an appetite at all, or an appropriate location in the community at all for a level two type site? Maybe the, the community's appetite is, is peaked out at level one, and therefore you would, if you adopted an ordinance that didn't have level two, you would basically have a ceiling. Contractor's yards larger than these metrics, a grid, number of vehicles, square footage of outside storage, square footage of inside storage, are just not appropriate in the community anywhere. Now, if you're under those thresholds, we can talk about your specific site, your specific equipment, your specific storage needs, and what conditions might need to be in place so that they're compatible with the by right uses. So happy to try to answer any other questions or facilitate any discussion on this if the board wants to continue to advance this. Just restating again, right now, there are no special requirements for contractor's yards. There are no limits. Somebody could apply for a contractor's yard that is 100 acres with 1,000 vehicles. And, and you would be, we'd have to review that based on your general standards, which you have done in the past for contractor's yards. And you have denied a contractor's yard based on general standards and ultimately prevailed in that case. So that's very subjective. There are ways to add some objective limits to kind of really help fortify the maximum impact one of these could cause.
Yeah, and I would, I just wanna be clear. And I testified to this point at the lower court hearing that ultimately went on appeal and where we won at the appeals court. That quote-unquote contractor's yard, that's, that was that issue in the protracted litigation was never a contractor's yard. It's a junkyard, and there's a big difference. And I think that to the extent that the draft ordinance language goes to exactly the analysis that I and others applied in that case to deny the permit, where we're saying that the equipment you have must relate to the activities you perform, that is for me a must. Number two, I think 50 vehicles for a type one yard, way too many, because even if what we're talking about is an example that resulted in protracted litigation is a contractor's yard, I can assure you, one of the biggest problems there was just the sheer number of items on that small property. I think the setbacks need to be increased, um, front, back, and sides, within reason. And I don't know, I would have to think a little bit about feet, um, in terms of lot size. So if we, um, if we made it like a standard 250-foot setback on all sides of a property, would that, would that sort of, would it make it impossible for someone to get it done? To get done what they need to do to actually have a contractor's yard within the meaning of our ordinance? I do think we need to stand strong against junk, junkyards that are miscast as contractor's yards. I think the overall this does that. Definitely the 50-vehicle limit, I think at a minimum should go down to 25 for a type one yard. And I know that we've all received comments about this type two, or.
Level two.
Level two. And I don't think we need that in our county. Yeah, the contractor's yards that, that I think about, that are totally appropriate for a place like Rappahannock County are, are small, um, small collections of vehicles directly related to someone doing excavation work, or doing, uh, commercial electrical work, or doing, um, small-scale residential construction. And when you think of that, number one, you don't think of needing, um, large land area, and number two, you don't think of a huge number of vehicles. I think 25 on the level one accomplishes, giving those people in our community who need to collect certain amount of critical mass of equipment to do their job, give them the room to do that. So I would go 25 vehicles, 250-foot setbacks, if someone maybe smarter than me could analyze whether that works. And then eliminate altogether the level two. And let's get something on the books, because I, I don't want to end up in court again over a junkyard. So, which is really what happened there. And I think we were right. And I think the vast, vast majority of the people in the community who care about Rappahannock County and seeing beauty agree that we made the right decision there. And I know that we've heard from one local environmental organization saying that Rappahannock County should not become the dumping ground for contractor's yard. So I'd argue that the, the junkyard that led to the litigation was, was, puts a spotlight on that point, because that involved an individual who was pretty much moving junk around and ended up here. Correct. So.
I would, I would totally agree with that. I think that the 50 vehicles, um, I think Mr. Whitson brings up a good point, which is that there's a critical mass of vehicles that a contractor's yard is gonna have to obtain in order to operate as a business. And I remember when we first started having this discussion, that we did discuss not wanting to chill possible, um, you know, businesses that could fit for Rappahannock. I mean, that's important, right? And, um, and so I think that given the 10 acres, the 250, I agree that I think that that 250-foot setback is probably, probably pretty good. And the 50-vehicle thing was, was kind of, um, just, I think, too much. So I, I would agree with, with Mr. Whitson on all those points. And then I have to say that when we first started discussing this, I think the level two seemed like it could, um, work. But I think that, um, the sort of briefs that we got from RLEP, which was their comments, I think is valid, which is that, hey, I mean, it's gonna look really attractive to, to do a big, you know, contractor yard out here, just because, you know, per acre, I mean, it's just much cheaper. And I think there's, 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 there's a valid point to be made there. So, um, I think that, um, I would be comfortable with that as well, getting rid of level two and then just kind of tighten it up, uh, where Mr. Whitson, uh, brought in his, um, his comments. The one other comment that our LEP made, which, um, Mr. Goff, I'd like to ask you about, is they, they did say that they thought that effectively screened seemed a little unenforceable. Is there, is there a language that we could use that would be more enforceable, so that when the zoning administrator goes up there, they, you know, what, what would be the standard for effectively screened? What's the test?
You can always say that, that the, the certain portions of the property just cannot be visible from the public road or from a particular vantage point. You can take that route. Or you can say that it has to be vegetated screen. You can say how high the screen has to be, whether it's, whether it can be, it's translucent. And you can say a lot of technical type terms. It depends on what your goal is, what do you want to do? You want to make sure it's not seen by the traveling public or by the neighbors? Are you concerned with suppressing reflections, say from these 25 vehicles, windscreen, those shields, shiny bumpers and stuff like that? Are you, are you interested in inter, in detecting noise transmission, dust transmission? All those things would have to go into the language. So what I guess staff would need to know is, what is it that you want to, for it to say? But also, you don't want to be so specific that you can't make a legislative judgment about it on a particular application. Because what may be like a fleet of UPS brown trucks is different from a fleet of red light and blue trucks. And so the harm of one versus the other would be something you'd want to weigh. So it, it's my opinion, and my advice to you is that you not get down into trying to adjudicate every single application that may come before you, or whether they have somewhat of flexibility. And that's where more general language comes in. So, and when you say, is it enforceable? Well, it is when it comes down to your legislative judgment and the fairly debatable standard. A judge is not gonna go in and say, well, I don't think that's.
Right.
That language is clear enough. So, but if you can sit up here and hearing the application and say, you know, this flimsy bamboo fence just, eh, you don't think that's effective screening for this application. So I'll defend my choice of those words, understand the argument, but I still also want you to consider that this is an additional standard that is part of your consideration of a specific application in the future.
Got it.
It's critical that these are not by right uses, and so all of this is coming to the legislative body. Somebody is convincing you that their application and their, uh, plan to effectively screen, you're reviewing that and determining whether you think it's, they've done it, have they met their requirement? And if, if they haven't, then you say, no, that, we, that doesn't get there, and I can't approve that. And maybe they change their effective screening to be a berm, or more trees, or more distance, or whatever.
I mean, you could word some of them, say, screen inadequate to block the public's view of the contractor's yard, or whatever. But, I mean, to the extent that every application is due for review and approval.
Might be on a hill, might be in a pit.
We can get into those details.
Sounds good.
For application.
Yeah. Same with lighting, I think that's another area where people, including our LEP, have raised concerns. And that'd be, I think, one idea would be to make, to ensure that lighting falls within or inside of, or no farther out than the setback for where the yard itself could be located on a parcel.
Yep.
But it, I assume that's another one, like screening, that can be addressed.
If you want to look at elasticity.
Yes.
There's a big difference between a bunch of lights on top of Mike Massey's hill, there at Massey's corner, and then way down in a velvied castle.
Yeah.
It does say, I mean, we were careful at the planning commission level to include language, um, upon request of the administrator, a commission application shall include a traffic management plan indicating the number of vehicles normally using the site. Oh, that's not the one I was looking for. I was looking for the one with the dust management.
It's eight. It is P eight.
Okay, P eight. So, uh, shall include, uh, light, noise, dust, vermin, fumes, smoke, and odor mitigation, as well as plans for onsite fire suppression, onsite chemical spills, emergency mitigation plan. So, you know, there will be, there may be, I mean, we only have four of these that have ever been permitted in the county, and I think one is no longer in existence. There may be applications that come for us where none of those things are a concern.
Yeah.
But there may be an application that comes before us where all of those things are a concern. And it does require that level of detail. And this, this wording, I believe, gives flexibility to the planning commission to vet those details for the board. I think, um, you know, having served on the planning commission for a number of years, as I know you have too, Mr. Whitson, um, the applicants, applicants want to build a successful application at that stage in their process, um, one that the board can approve. And so there is an opportunity to negotiate items like the effectiveness of the screening. I think of the application out on 231 from Mount Meddy Farm a few years ago, and there were many valid concerns by the neighbors for the parking. And they're in a low spot, and so there is a vegetative buffer that was installed. And, um, you know, the planning commission was diligent, and that work and the applicant was, was happy to oblige, because vetting that at the planning commission, it made for a successful application at the board level. So I, I do appreciate that, the details that the planning commission has sent out for your consideration allows a degree of flexibility, recognizing the many different kinds of businesses for which we may receive applications. I do think, I mean, 50 vehicles and pieces of equipment, that to me is the most challenging part, because, you know, if you have, if you have a snow, a snowplow on a truck, but maybe you also have a couple other blades that fit on that truck. And so is the, is the truck with the one blade a vehicle? And then the other attachments are pieces of equipment, and you count them all, and that's part of the sum of 50? If you're looking at items like that as pieces of equipment, you're gonna get to 50 quickly. So I, I, that to me is, is the largest struggle with these definitions is, and I, I don't think it serves a, a great purpose to get too far in the weeds on these. But I, I do think that guidance is going to be key for the planning commission.
Well, yeah, I wonder if there's a way to, because I think that's true. And I wonder if there's a way to just really focus on vehicles. I mean, I wonder if pieces of equipment. Yeah, that's a really good point. And I thought of the same thing. I mean, you can have, I've, we have eight implements for a tractor that are pieces of equipment.
What, could we say motorized pieces of equipment? And that would imply something with the, I mean, wheels and a motor, Art? Does that make sense from a legal standpoint?
Well, yeah, like, again, going back to the idea of effectively screening, you could also say the appropriate number of vehicles to, like, you're can reserve it to yourselves based on that application. So if you've got a guy who's in the snowplow business, and he's also got sand spreaders and stuff like that, you're right, it'll add up to 50 quick.
Yep.
Just like y'all talked about in the planning commission. So I, I think here again, just back a little bit away from the micromanagement and leave it to the applicant to give you an appropriate plan that is suited to that site. So don't box yourself in with an arbitrary number that you really can't control, looking, you know, ex ante into what's gonna come before you. So I would just say here again, use a more general descriptor. So it's there so that the applicant knows he has to address that. So if he's coming in and he's got, let's say, he's got a fleet of 20, um, large box trucks, and trailers and all that kind of stuff, does that mean he's out, he just can't even bother to come in and ask you all about it, you know? So, uh, just, I would change it to.
Appropriate.
Appropriate.
And, and so the idea just, and I think Gary explained this at the outset, but I just want to make sure. So last time a contractor yard application came to us, we really had to hang our decision on general standards that really didn't go to any details of what was on that site, et cetera. So we appropriately went to the comprehensive plan, we went to the general standards in our zoning ordinance, um, and, and left it at that. But this, this gives us sort of additional basic standards, right, on which we can hang our hat.
Yeah, I think I would be leery of using appropriate type language if you didn't also have the language was said. Those things you have have to apply to the thing you do, right?
For sure.
Yeah. So if you have that requirement.
For me, that's.
If you have that requirement, then you can maybe be a little less rigid on. If you have that requirement, then you can maybe be a little less rigid on the number of thing, you know, that they have. Uh, I did want to speak real quick to the two, two hundred and fifty foot setback. If you just had a square foot in the center of your parcel and you met the two hundred and fifty foot setback all around, that's five point seven acres. So minimum ten acres. Uh, so with a two hundred and fifty foot setback, you're maybe going to get three acres that you can use, three, four acres, once you start to expand things.
I want to ask you for that math. I, I couldn't do it in my head anyway.
Well, you know, to be, but to be honest and to Mr. Goff's point, I, I really am concerned. I just want to be considerate of businesses, right? So I do want to make sure that if this thing is, you know, if somebody's trying to put in a contractor's yard that would be really appropriate at the front of a piece of property that's on a road that would really work. I mean, I do think that, you know, there, if there's some.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I would, I would, I would, I would, uh, consider.
Route two eleven right now has a two hundred foot setback anywhere.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, you have that covered in your name thoroughfare. Uh, other than, other than that, it's going to be a hundred feet, just your kind of by right.
Well, I think that's why the two hundred.
That's, that's, I think, why the planning commission landed there because that's already the requirement for two eleven and it.
Yeah.
It seemed to make sense to carry it over to the others. But having a larger mandatory setback also, um, it, it, it speaks to the screening and effectiveness and.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have a hundred acres and you're going to use the middle acre, then we're probably only talking about the entrance because the rest, unless you're up on some, some kind of hill, it's really out of sight, out of mind.
Yep. Which is kind of the ideal that we're looking for.
I have a call with the judge's comments, um, although I think she was overruled. Um, she questioned the definition of you should and how do you define that, um, you can't or you can see their, the particular property when you come over the hill? Did you do any testing? And, um, so there was questions of our definitions that worry me a little bit about being effectively screened when somebody can say it is and somebody else could say it's not, so.
And so that's why this ordinance tries to turn all of that around. Uh, and so P six, that speaks to, uh, parking, loading, open store shall be effectively screened from the view of public breaks away in neighboring properties. Partly, a landscaping plan shall be submitted that shows effectiveness of screening. Who determines what it is? Your plan. And then we look at your plan and we say, we don't like your plan. No. Or, that's a pretty good plan. Yes. Or maybe there are other things beyond effective screening that, uh, that, at that location in the county, there's too much noise, too much light, too much traffic. That's not the thing that carries the day. But between that and the plans that Ms. Smith noted earlier, um, that would potentially be required, we want the applicant, we want the burden to be on the applicant to identify the impacts and then identify how they're going to mitigate the impacts. Then you can judge whether they've identified all the impacts and mitigated them. And if they did it to your liking, then maybe they have a solid application. And if they didn't, I think it gives you a good foundation to deny it. And then when the judge asks you, who did this review? Well, it's, well, yeah, it did and they didn't do a very good job.
Right, as long as you have, you're going to have two key points on all these things. And as long as the board has a discussion and three of you saying yes, you, you're really beyond reproach because you've exercised a legislative prerogative. And all these questions are usually so, are, are, usually they are fairly debatable. You know, the applicant comes in and he's carved out a three acre clearing in the middle of a forest. And from the closest road, there's nothing but forest between the, the use and the public. Yeah, I mean, what else do you want? Okay. But if it's like I said, on a hill where everybody can see it from a primary highway, uh, and it's going to involve lighting, lots of vehicles, lots of traffic, lots of dust, now you've got a totally whole different horse, different color. And you could look at it and say, look, I don't think there's anything you can do to make this site appropriate. So therefore, that, your application is denied. And you're not being arbitrary and capricious because you applied this checklist of standards to that site and made a legislative judgment about its suitability for that proposed use. But the burden has to be on the applicant to give you enough details to, to do that. Uh, and you've got to resist the whole capella exchange that happened way back in the planning commission when the whole thing started. It was staff initially who had suggested, well, why don't you try for a contractor's yard? So that was the clue to, okay, I'm going to let the planning commission develop my plan for me. Isn't that what you do, planning commission? Develop plans? No, that's not what they do.
Rule, rule number one, the application is always the property of the applicant.
Well, the one thing, not to, not to beat a dead horse and thank goodness that horse has long, long been deceased. But the, the, um, lower court judge, in combination with, um, the plaintiff's attorney were asking, what kind of data, what kind of, what kind of analysis? What kind of, basically saying, how, how do you, how do you quantify a decision that goes to questions of scenic beauty, scenic entrance to the county, adverse effect on neighboring properties? So I do believe that with the ordinance we had at the time and with general standards and I think appropriate analysis, we got, we got it done to even satisfy the appeals court, that we met that fairly debatable standard. So to your point about, you know, data or, you know.
Definitions.
Definitions. I think that this, this puts more meat on the bones that we used to bolster, uh, what I thought was a very strong denial last time. And so maybe, maybe this doesn't go all the way to, like, what is our, what is our quantitative analysis for saying that this? Well, the quantitative analysis is, here are the setbacks you need to meet. Do you meet them or not? Oh, as Art said, you're on a hill. Yeah, your lighting's got to be even more chilled out, that kind of thing. So I mean, this, this does add some objective stuff, whether it's quantitative or not, that I think will strengthen our ability to analyze these in the future.
I do have a few questions, not to continue this too long. But I was wondering, automobile graveyard forty-nine that was struck through, we went to fifty-three and we went from two inoperable or junk motor vehicles to more than five, five or more.
Yeah, I think those, that aligns things with state code definitions for junk automobile graveyard junkyards, which are referenced at the end of that citation, I think, is, um, why that was done.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that. And do we have hours of operation anywhere?
In a.
I'm sorry.
No, um, you could codify that or that could be part of the.
Where you are.
The gen- general standards and the, right now, one seventy fifty-three, which talks about standards you can apply, gets into that sort of thing, uh, or conditions that you can apply, so.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that on the permit level because like to the earlier example of us, somebody who's got a snow plows, you, you, you need to let them operate twenty-four hours. They're driving in and out at two AM, you know, loading up and stuff. If that's, if that were the use.
Yeah, if you're in the middle of an ag area, then what is the expectation for the community? Expectation is that a tractor's going to start almost any time of the day.
Yeah.
Um, when the tractor needs to start.
And immediately go in reverse.
Yeah.
Beep, beep. Uh, what else did I have? The strike through, and this just shows, I'm still learning this kind of stuff. The SE under contractor office shop yard on, I guess, eighty.
Right, so, um, staff's feeling, I think, held, and maybe it was, came out of the planning commission and said, these just don't belong in a conservation zoning district. Now, this is your steep slope forested areas.
Right.
Ag is one thing, but conservation is just probably not appropriate. And there are some other, uh, the planning commission's been looking at lodging uses and different things where, um, it seems like it was a, a, a kind of a basket deal. Anything, you know, anything you can do in ag, you can do in conservation. And that just doesn't really make sense on how conservation's defined in our code.
And leaving it blank is okay? You don't.
Yes, blank means no.
Just no way.
Yeah, it doesn't line up very well here.
No, it does not. Um, we talked about ninety-nine and one oh four, total area covered by outdoor storage. I think this is still, um, and then total area covered by all structures. It seemed contradictory at the time, but I have something, some idea. It's outdoor storage unit versus.
Yeah, so covered storage, you have a roof, um, not necessarily walls. And so how much of that would you want to allow versus just, you know, a paved grass gravel area upon which there's all kinds of stuff? Which could be outside storage.
Area covered by all structures, you're talking dirt?
Structures, buildings.
Okay.
Yeah.
But could be individual, like, units or something?
Yeah, so you might have two, ten tiny buildings, one giant building. And you, you know, break it up any way you want. Um, now whether their number is the right thing, ten thousand square feet is not a lot of structure. Uh, when it, you know, for, you look at a farm building that's storing hay bales or something, you're not. Not that it's typical, but the large barn out on Crest Hill is over an acre under roof.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is ten thousand. So, you know, not gigantic.
Okay. So for level one, that's probably appropriate size.
Yeah, and then maybe like, as you discussed, maybe level two is not a thing. And you're just, you're putting a lid on what is appropriate in the community.
That's all I have.
But I, I always like to look at the definitions, so we, we're reminded why things align the way they do. The conservation district contains those mountains, which are environmentally sensitive, have physical limitations and contain much of the county's timber resources. The regulations are designed with emphasis on the conservation of those areas to minimize the potential adverse environmental impact while providing for compatible, very low density residential uses. It kind of makes you wonder how it got in there in the first place. Except there have never been very many applications for them. So, um, we will be dialing back, um, if the board is in agreement, that things like this don't really belong in conservation zones.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And so is the next step, this gets kicked back to you all?
Mm-hmm.
And then we.
We'll have a public hearing and then send it up to you all.
Okay. So, so make a motion? Do I need to?
So I, I guess, you know, ultimately, Ms. Smith would have to have a sense that she understands the feedback from the board. If the board wanted to formalize certain things very specifically, you could do that. Um, otherwise, as long as the planning commission understands what, what the board thinks is appropriate, because the worst thing, well, not the worst thing, a waste of time might look like the planning commission modifying the ordinance, holding a public hearing, passing it to the board and you not wanting to hold a public hearing because it's not what you wanted to do.
Would it make sense to have the office document what we just said? And get everybody to reply to you that, yes, that was what you said? And then we give it to the planning commission?
We can't really do that.
Well, I think, I think what I'm understanding, what I'm hearing is we're striking level two. So we'll take off the level one language at the end of that, additional standards for contractors' office shop yard. The minimum lot size is still ten acres, uh, two fifty setbacks on all sides. Um, we're making it an appropriate number of vehicles and pieces of equipment rather than setting a number. And I think that's it. The two hundred and fifty feet on all sides, yep. So those are, those are what I heard from you all. I didn't hear anything else.
Lighting was the other one, if, if we could.
Lighting and setbacks kind of commiserate to the property, right?
All lighting would fall within the setback area.
Lighting, lighting is, I mean, we can request that as, at the planning commission level one. In this case, it would strike out the level one language and just say, application shall include a light, dust, vermin, fumes, smoke and odor mitigation plan, as well as onsite fire suppression and onsite chemical spill emergency mitigation plan upon request of the county administrator commission.
The zoning administrator.
I'm sorry.
It is in that context.
Yeah, got it.
Would, um, stating, going back to the number of vehicles, would stating an appropriate number of vehicles also speak to type? So fifty excavators will look very different than, you know, twenty-five tractors, two trucks and however many snow piles. So would, I understand, saying the appropriate number of vehicles will speak to the, that number, but what about type?
I think one idea that got thrown out was appropriate number of motorized vehicles.
I think, I think the appropriate number of vehicles and pieces of equipment captures all of that detail to where, um, you know, we can request that information. Look at, see what that looks like, how that measures in the context of the application and reach a decision about whether that's appropriate or not.
And I think the key point though is, which came out in our litigation, which was, and it was folded into the motion to deny, um, is that whatever you have needs to match what you do. Which then forces the applicant to say what kind of contractor they are, which then gets you away from the potential for junk yards. So as long as, as long as that language is up front and center, the rest follows logically from that. And I think that is the most important part of this, which is linking equipment to commercial activity.
And it being a good working order.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
We're definitely headed in the right direction and I think we, it would be great to get something on the books on this.
Well, it sounds good. I'll, um, I just reached out to Michelle and asked her to get the details so we can work through that at the planning commission meeting. I think it'll go swiftly and we can, um, hold a public hearing and get it done before January.
Always a nice thought, do the party pooper.
It's doable.
Yeah, good. Uh, temporary sign.
I'm a public judge, I'm new to these meetings. I have a thought and I don't know if I'm allowed to bring it up and if I'm not, that's fine.
Technically, no. Um, but it, does it have to do with this particular subject?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm going to say yes.
Okay. The weight.
Do you want to come up to the mic, please?
Laura Grigsby Hampton District. The weight of the vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
Could be added in to this because it impacts the roads for ingress and egress onto the yard. And if you've got cranes coming in here that weigh tens of thousands of pounds driving on a tractor and a truck big enough to carry it down two eleven, we could see deterioration of our roads, which is a huge impact. Thank you.
I think that's a really good point. It is addressed in, um, item eleven that says, upon request of a zoning administrator, a commission application shall include a traffic management plan indicating the number and types of vehicles normally using the site and describing the existing road geometry, including surface treatment, width and horizontal and vertical curves along the traveled route between the site and the nearest primary highway. So we are trying to take into account that in using the site, there's not, uh, vehicles involved that would negatively impact, um, traffic conditions.
Well, I appreciate the variance here and having us raise the whole thing.
That's a lot. Thank you.
Good point.
Very good point. So based on what I have been educated on recently, because I just allowed you to make a point, is there anyone else that would like to make a point with this specific issue in mind?
How fair and reasonable. We don't need a.
I have a Zoom user.
And I have a Zoom user that's actually listed as Zoom user. I'll open it to you as well.
Only if you raise your Zoom hand.
All right. Okay, we're good. Moving on. Thank you. Temporary signs. Holy moly.
Get it done.
Uh, this item was tabled from your September four meeting till today. It is now today.
So I, I think, I, I feel like we can make some progress on this. I, I just, I feel like if we break up, um, temporary signs into two different seasons, basically the busy season and the non-busy season, which would also line up with the political season, um, it'll give businesses an opportunity to, to put up more stuff. And, um, and then when it's not the busy season, it's not. Um, I think that, uh, we just need to get rid of hay bale signs, period, uh, or give them to everybody. I think the off-premise signs are, are, are good as they've been written in the ordinance. Uh, the mo- the, the model ordinance, I think that staff actually did.
I think that staff actually did a really, really hard, good job with a difficult thing. Um, and so, yeah, I just, I think if we start there, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it works. And I, and I had emailed, um, Ms. Donahue, and I think you, you all discussed it in, in August. But I just think if we approach the temporary signs like that, I think it makes sense. Because I don't think that the community really wants, you know, a lot of signs all the time, but businesses really do rely on them. And I've just heard a lot from business owners and who've talked to me about it. And, um, I think it probably is, um, per, it makes sense to then line up if we just had those two seasons. Um, I think the question would be, well, is that less enforceable? I mean, I think any of this is. So I, I mean, I guess I'm just sort of trying to cut it in half there and just trying to make it makes more sense. I also know that people want to, you know, be able to put up their, um, you know, whatever, the thirty-six, twenty-four inch, um, you know, political signs for maybe up to four or five candidates. And I think that's absolutely reasonable. Um, so I, I think that those seasons happen to coincide at the exact same time, which is kind of cool. And so my thinking was if we did from January to, I can't remember what it was, maybe May or June or whatever, or, you know, something like that, and then from then, like, let's say, May or June to then December, you have another one. It gives our businesses some more time to, or a broader leeway to advertise. And I know that folks are really, you know, sort of polarized about this issue. Some want none. Some folks really rely on them. So that was where I, that's where I got to. I don't know if you all have had any thoughts about it.
Well, like. Um, I think when we looked at your proposal in general terms last time, my only reaction, and you definitely can convince me otherwise, but my immediate reaction was that it just seemed, it seemed complicated potentially, even though it's not that complicated. It's just one extra thing for people to have to know and for people to have to, um, remember and implement year to year. People come and go. So my reaction to kind of some seasonal or, um, time period parameters for when you can have certain types of signs or otherwise, just, I thought, if we just keep it simple in terms of square footage, um, and one, I guess with the caveat, I, I know people have these, whatever you call them, they're like these sort of, uh.
Same board.
Yeah, which I think if we had an exemption for those that are placed and removed within a day, or the same. Yeah, they're.
Business hours?
Yeah, they're, they sit only during business hours. That's reasonable. And then everything else, just by dis, by zoning district, with some square footage, maybe that could increase based on setback from a property line. And I still don't, I don't wanna carve out for or against hay bales. I just, um, I think that we just have to have a, a basic time limit for what constitutes a temporary sign. And I think the election period, which you brought up, is a pretty good way to determine what people generally tolerate. And I remember somebody telling me a while ago that it's like Labor Day, and then as soon as possible, your sign, they go, your political signs go up, no earlier than Labor Day and come down within a few days of the election. So whatever that works out in September, October, that's sixty days, maybe put it to seventy-five days or ninety days for any temporary signs. So time period and square footage, and I would leave it at that by zoning district. But I liked, I like your seasonal idea. I just, I just questioned whether.
You know, I got the idea because I went and dug around, uh, different localities, and I, and a few different localities did it, and they discussed this issue. I was like, huh.
Yeah.
You know, I, I agree with you. I think it's, it's more, it's twice as complicated.
I just think that we risk, I'm not interrupting you on that.
No, go ahead.
I think, um, if we are treating different seasons differently, and say we have a certain set of rules for events in the fall. And then someone starts an event in the spring. And the event in the spring says, why are my event sign rules different than the event in the fall? Um, we're gonna have a problem.
Well, and even, you know, some businesses, the gym is gonna get busier the colder it, it gets. You know, more people are gonna be driven inside to work out. Um, see, you know, seasons, uh, for the businesses may change. Someone else's busy season might not mirror, um, you know, the ice cream trucks and the wineries and, you know, what other, you know, more of our touristy businesses. We do have businesses whose seasons don't necessarily coincide with that. I think it gets harder.
So what do you guys wanna do? I mean, what number, what's, what's the number? I mean, if we're just talking about a number, I think what I had before was, I can't remember what it was, let's, let's say three temporary signs in the slow season. And then I think I had suggested maybe up to five, maybe, or six, and we're talking about like the typical ones you see. So where do we wanna land? If we're just gonna pick one number, you know, is that what I said?
Yeah.
If we're gonna pick one number, like, what would that be? And I, and I've heard folks saying, like, I don't, yeah, so tw, ten square feet, roughly three by twenty-four by eighteen. So that was the low end, and then the high end was six.
Yeah.
So double. Um, would you guys wanna do? Yeah, so if we're talking about one number, do we split the difference? I mean, I don't know. What do you fuck, what do you guys think?
And, and then I, does the number of signs matter, or does the square footage matter?
Yeah.
One big sign, three small signs, so I did that.
I think you just do square, total square footage.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to give it a, a visual.
Yeah.
So a limit of twenty square feet for temporary signs, done. And that's an agricultural, conservation, residential, uh, it's, it's just throwing stuff out there. I, I was just incredibly, just absorbing what people were saying, and then I went out and looked at other ones. I think the one, what, I think the one I saw was in, was one in Wisconsin, I think, in New Hampshire. And, and everybody's dealing with the same issue after Reed v. Gilbert, everybody. And so that's how some, now, I think you're right. I think that that needs to have heavy guidance from a zoning department so that people can understand what's going on. If you're gonna have two sets of rules, like Ms. Smith pointed out, that's complicated, then people are gonna say, well, you know. And then they're gonna think that they can do it because they're unaware of it, and then they're gonna get in trouble, and then they're gonna, you know, feel like it's unfair. So I'm gonna totally agree with that. I, I would be fine splitting the difference.
You have the whole, what happens on the shoulder season? I get my, I put my sign up ten days before the non-busy season. How long do I get to have, and how many do I take some down? Do they grandfathered in?
But that's like enforcement of anything we do.
How about five days total with no extension? And you have to wait a month or two months or something to apply again, so that we know it gets cleaned up.
One of our issues, you know, temporary sign is that, right? It's temporary. It's, a lot of times, it is as easy as walking out and stepping into the ground, and it's there. As opposed to using a sledgehammer and fence post or something, which is a little bit harder. So I step, put my step in sign, and then ninety days later, I go out and I say, all right, my time's up. Pick it up, walk over two feet, and step it down.
That's why I'm, I, I think there should be a period where you have to take the sign away totally.
Well, and that's why the rear of the signs have to identify the date of first, uh, display. But all they have to do is, once they pick it up, they cross that out, put a new one down, um. I don't know how to solve that.
No, you guys have to go around and check sign dates.
Well, I also, I also don't.
That only comes up, if there's an enforcement issue and there's no, if there're no date, then it's illegal, easy.
I think, I personally think we're overthinking it, um.
What's your number?
Well, first of all, I'm gonna say that the most important number was Vito's phone number, which got called the day after our last meeting.
Yep.
They said, hey, Gary or someone called him and said, hey, Vito, go take down all the signs in the meeting that are not legal. And they did, and guess what? It made a big difference. So, let's, it made a big difference. So as long as that effort continues, I think a lot of this goes away. Then my number would be, um, ninety days is temporary. That constitutes temporary. I wouldn't get into extensions, and you have to remove it for X number of days. It's just like ninety days. And then if somebody drives by and says, hey, that person's had that sign up for a year or a half a year and files a complaint, then it's enforceable. We say, you gotta take your sign down. Um, and then in terms of square footage, um, ag and conservation, I would say you have a, you have a limit of, I'm just looking all the way across, or ten square feet. Um, this is sixty or thirty days. Yeah, again, I'm going off of the political season, so that's at least sixty. So I think we just go ninety across the board regardless of district. And then, um, also rega, uh, regardless of district, you just go square footage and say a hundred square feet.
That's the, that's the, yeah, of course.
Yep.
Treat them all as exactly the same.
Now, what, what was proposed was five temporary signs allowed per lot in all zoning districts not to exceed a total aggregate of fifty square feet, nor exceeding a height of eight feet. Temporary signs must bear the date of first display and shall have a hundred-day duration of display limitation. Upon written request and upon showing go cause, a zoning administrator may grant up to a hundred-day extension.
Fifty square feet seems. I guess you go, I mean, that seems small, because that's. Like, uh.
Three by four.
Two by five times five. Um, two by five times five, that's fifty.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I just throw, I was, in my mind, the simpler, the better. You're like, here's the duration, here's the square footage, there you go. That's it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah.
I, I think fifty square feet is probably.
See, the, the thirty-two square feet is, is a typical standby. It's your four-by-eight sheet of plywood.
Right.
Right, that's your big political sign.
Yeah, one, one sign.
You get one big political sign, or you can have, chop it up into a bunch of little ones.
That's the main issue.
So thirty-two is the number you see sometimes, fifty you see sometimes. If you make it smaller than thirty-two, then, you know, you're basically saying you can't put up the big political sign. And that's probably just, um, probably not a battle you wanna fight.
If I'm reading this correctly, fifty's what's been in there.
Right.
Yes, um, although it's, it was a little bit weird, yeah.
I, I mean, look, I don't, I'm trying to picture it, but I just think, here's the total square footage you're gonna have for ninety days. And it can't get any simpler than that.
Yeah, a height limit might be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean.
It's square footage and height, and you can make it as wide as you want. It'd be one inch, but.
And most people put up too big signs. If anything, I think we should go up, make it seventy, and no taller than ten feet.
Anyway. I just, I, I think that if we just lock down the time period, lock down some square footage everyone can agree on, it, and then.
Yeah, I think it's just the details.
And hear from the public.
I think it's these details. It's like, do you wanna go fifty? Do you wanna go seventy? Do you want to do thirty-two? I think that's the trick. I think, let me just say this for me, I totally agree. Let's keep it simple. Let's broadly apply it, like Mr. Goff was saying, ninety days, done. What's the size? One sheet of plywood is thirty-two, so are we counting signs, we're counting?
Uh, two, two faces, don't.
Don't matter.
Don't double if you can't see it from, say, now, if you did it in some way that you can see.
I mean, I think thirty-two's, that's a lot, especially with two sides. So if we do seventy, that's like, just four, that's two sheets of plywood.
I mean, look around, and there's most people that have up one sign, have up a second sign. And, and we're not really getting, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not getting complaints. And the whole purpose of this ordinance review is a reflection of real-time conditions that people find acceptable in the county.
And if you stick to the ninety days, the complaint goes away anyway.
That's the whole idea of temporary.
In front and back, i- if you have your sign, I don't think that should double.
It does, no.
Yeah. Thirty, thirty-two square feet, so yeah, two, make it seventy square feet, ninety days.
Okay, okay. And, hey.
Sounds good.
I have a question. I think, I think in Rappahanna County, hay, signs on hay bales are really cool. So by taking this approach, regardless of the candidate or cause that might be on the face of those hay bales, I think it's cool. I mean, it's an interesting agricultural-based way to express something. Hallo, Happy Halloween, Merry Christmas, whatever. So by doing this, I just wanna confirm, the person who wants to put Happy Halloween on hay bales can only do it on a hundred square feet, or seventy-five square feet, or seventy square feet, once we define it that way.
Yeah, if you're not gonna have a separate carve-out for that method of constructing a sign, um, then, and you, you would call those temporary, then they, they would be limited to the same thing as anybody who's putting up the shop.
So as long as they're, as long as they're ca, we can't have a carve-out within a temporary, within the term temporary. Meaning you can, as a, as a subcategory of temporary, you can say the following signs constructed of these materials.
Well, that's what the, that's what the draft does.
It does do that.
You can't regulate the material that the signs are made of. It's just that most, the hay bale thing that occurred last four years ago was enormous, you know? This was stretched out a little, over, you know, what, three hundred feet or something.
So you can regulate the size of a, a pole sign, right, versus a monument sign?
Right.
And so if there are different types of signs, I think you can regulate them differently, different signs, height, different things like that. So I think one could argue in an agricultural setting, you can have a low, you know, wide sign made out of hay bales. Now, you don't have to. And, but we, as we said before, this is all about, you know, under what circumstances are we writing people letters saying, you're not allowed to do that?
Right. But we could proceed with, like, the simple first and have temporary signs, and then at some, in some different context or discussion related to sign organs, we could address the question of other materials and signs made of hay bales and that kind of thing.
Sure, you can make a poolism. You can regulate the lighting of signs, because that's content neutral. You can re, regulate the construction materials that signs are made of, because that's content neutral, doesn't matter what sign says. You can, you can relate, or you can regulate setbacks. You can regulate the time of displays, none of which is, you don't have to read the signs to enforce it. And that's all, that's all you gotta look out for is to, to stay completely neutral on content regulation. So now, if, there are certain things, like in the case, Gilbert case, that was advertising a special event that only happened on Sunday mornings, because it was a church event, right? And so they also needed lots of little signs to show them the way to get to the service, right? So you know, you turn here, you turn here, and turn there, so you get to Pastor John's, you know, revival or whatever that was.
It's like in whose lodge every week or something.
Yeah, yeah, we go, you know, at the lodge or what have you, at the VFW chicken dinner, okay? So you, you're getting, gotta build in a little flexibility to meet the realities of what people need signs for. It's just you can't tell them what to put on the signs.
Okay, we'll take it down.
So let me ask you this. If, if, if we all decided sometime later that, um, a three-hundred-foot-long Happy Halloween sign, however many hay bales that would require was something that we would love in the spirit of Halloween and the fall and all of that.
As long as you don't say it has to say Happy Halloween.
We could say, for signs constructed, hay, signs constructed hay bales can cover this much square footage with this setback, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, and that's what we try.
And, and outside of the temp, outside of the temporary thing.
Are there guidelines for seasonal displays? I mean, seasonal, seasonal displays are permitted.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can say, okay, that you can make, put up temporary signs. More of them or less of them, depending on the time of the year. You just can't limit it to Christmas or Easter or Halloween.
I think if you took thirty-five round bales and you alternated them in orange and black wrapping.
Is that a sign?
It's a seasonal display. It's a seasonal display.
I don't think it's a seasonal.
It's a seasonal display. I think this is good, I think ninety days with seventy-two, or seventy square feet.
Could we just do seventy, seventy-five square feet?
I was gonna say seventy-five might be a better number.
Seventy-five is kinda round and a.
It's two sheets of plywood and a, a three by four, yeah.
Man, I never imagined that we'd be talking sheets of plywood, but, you know, the devil's in the details.
Gary started it.
I'm, I'm sure in Loudoun County tonight, the board supervisors, I mean, they're definitely talking about sheets of plywood. And, and, you know, data centers.
I would not trade their reading for ours, so.
I think that sounds good, I think that that's a really good, uh, but I think it cuts it in, in a good spot where I think businesses are gonna be able to. To use that, and I think that, uh, cuz a lot of the businesses.
Just clean.
It's very clean.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree.
And then can we, since we're talking about, um, since we're talking about temporary signs and trying to lock that down. Would that be the place to have a carve-out for, uh, something like temporary frame type signs or whatever, like sandwich board signs?
Well, I don't think we need to, because of the square footage. You, you're saying you wanna add more square footage?
No, what I'm saying is, if you put something like.
Put it up and take it down or anything.
Put it up and take it down, like Hopkins ordinary, beer room or.
It would just fit within their seventy-five square feet. And they're putting it up and taking it down much, much shorter than ninety days.
Create it to different temporal quality, which is that, what he's saying, which is that if you can regulate that. If you take it down and put it up within a twelve, eighteen, sixteen hour period, it does not count towards your total square footage. You could say that.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what you're getting.
Uh, yeah, I just, businesses, businesses in Rappahannock County typically like to put those out on the road. And I think of.
They can't do that anyway, bye.
Well, I know, but, put something up that says we're open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the maple trees.
Okay, as long as, as long as those people are, okay, I guess you're right on square footage and temporary, they're allowed, it's just.
Lighting.
But it could be every day throughout the year.
Yeah.
So I was wondering.
That's the, that's the devil in all the temporary signs, okay, ninety days, then what? You pick it up and move it over for a new ninety days?
No, but that's what I, that's why I feel like we need to clarify that a sign placed and removed. Place, both placed and removed during a business day.
Is different.
Doesn't count.
Yep.
That's what I mean.
Then businesses do get signage by right, so this is in addition to what they get currently.
Permanent.
Permanent, yeah.
Uh, lighting of temporary signs, just not allowed?
Not allowed.
Seems like a easy thing to, to.
Yep.
And then you didn't talk about height, do you wanna just be silent on that and say the seventy-five square feet's gonna cover it?
Cover it.
I mean, we could imagine a worst-case scenario, but what would that be? A hundred foot tall, one foot wide sign?
What, and particularly if you're not going to allow the, you know, wind-driven movement, uh, that's.
You mean like the Bat signal on the cloud? Let's not go there.
People tried to do it in New York City, literally.
Um, but if, if it's gonna be a static, you're practically limited to a certain height, um, so you could just be silent if you want.
I mean, I, I still think eight, eight is a, is a good guidance, I think that's very reasonable.
Okay.
You're beginning to get into some serious structure if you're gonna have a seventy-five foot sign.
Yeah.
Temporary up more than eight feet, that's a lot of movement for that.
Yep.
Okay.
And I also, I just have to speak out about the extension, and I, I understand that there's not a. A will maybe, uh, of my peers to have a mechanism for an extension. But there are some growing seasons that I, I think are longer than ninety days. And the idea of a, of a, an appeal for an extension is recognizing. That, you know, there are agricultural operations that may wanna advertise a specific harvest for longer than ninety days.
Could we just do an, an extension equal to the ninety-day period?
That's fine, and it basically cuts it by ten days on each end.
That makes a hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
Which is a little much for.
Which is basically, we're, we're back to where we started, which was nonstarted for most people.
I would do ninety, what I think I had was nine, I had sixty and ninety, but it was plus the thirty-day extension, because realtors are gonna wanna do the same thing.
Well, they're gonna do what they want, let's face it.
Yeah, but it is true, and they, and they, and they, you know, they do constitute part of Rappahannock business for sure, and so, they're gonna want the same thing.
There was, the ord- the, the proposed ordinance did try to carve out. The, the real estate signs, not by name or by content. But just to say that if there's a parcel that's for sale, you get extra signage. I'm not gonna tell you what you put on it, but you get extra signage, if it's for sale. And that's how the draft had tried to attempt, if you have a pro- a property that is under construction or something. You get an extra sign because that's here and whatever. So that's how the draft tried to handle the real estate signs. And that can take up your allotment of temporary signs or it could be an addition or.
Well, then you could do the same thing, you could say, and I, I know it gets complicated, but you could say on ag land, you get more. So instead of doing the extension, you could just single out ag land and you could say you get a hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty would be better.
Okay.
We had talked about, I think, ages ago, um, where like Greg Williams who sells pumpkins one time of the year and sells. Um, what's another time of the year?
Christmas trees.
Christmas trees, another time, the, the sign could change to demonstrate that item for sale. Instead of having the same sign year-round kind of thing, so we've talked about the content could change. And that you could do ninety days, I think. Um, because they're changing what the sign says, it would be obvious that it's a different sign.
Yeah.
So you're saying a hundred and twenty and I can?
I mean, I, I still think that some seasons may be a little longer than that. Um, I'm thinking specifically of apples, which is like our signature crop as a county and. Um, I think a hundred and twenty's still, I mean, I, I think, I still don't think, ninety with a ninety-day extension is crazy.
Apples are five months, cuz you have them coming in June, July, August, September and October.
Yeah.
So it's pretty long.
Then you got your good keepers that you might still be selling in November.
Well, yeah, you'll, you'll still be selling those in, yeah.
And if you keep them cold on enough, they're good year-round.
So, but, is this, what's the process here, does this stay with us or does this go back to the planning commission or?
My read for the planning commission was, they did some good work, they sent it up, um, wasn't quite what the public expected and so. You know, they probably need some direction before they take another swing.
I don't think the planning commission intends to work on this again, I think the planning commission intends for the board to work on this.
Let's get it done.
I think it's okay.
I think we tried really hard and, um, tried to provide a good and reasonable numbers. But as we all know, until things reach a critical mass, sometimes you don't get a lot of feedback.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we do ninety days, um, seventy square feet and on ag land you get an extension?
Seventy-five square feet?
Yeah, seventy-five square feet, and then on ag land you get an extension. And, and what is the extension?
If we can make that stick, I'm fine with that, which makes sense.
Yeah, cuz it covers, yeah, it does cover that orchard season.
Our focus is ag and tourism, so that would make sense.
So it's up to.
I mean, I think that just reflects what's currently happening in the county.
Yep.
That, that people totally rely on.
Is, is the extension perfunctory, I mean, what's? Why, why would you just?
Ag sign is a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
Um, well, because a lot of, a lot of people live on ag land.
Okay, just ahead, just.
Anybody who comes and asks is gonna get it?
Yeah, sure, yeah, of course, that's how it works, it's just, we're trying to give.
Ag land actually selling.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it, yeah, it's the, you know, it's, well, hey, you know, if you have the incentive to come get the extension because of that, yeah, definitely.
What's the process?
Then why don't we not just say a hundred and fifty days?
Don't, because I just said that, because I was saying that. Lots of road frontage is ag land that has nothing to do with farming.
Got it.
So then it just turns all of that into that big period.
Yeah, so we did do another carve-out, if you, if you have a farm stand, then you're allowed extra signage. That was another kinda real estate type attempt at subverting the Reed Gilbert mess.
But that's.
The question is, is who has a farm stand, so like Jenkins, is that, that's not even a farm stand, cuz that's just a farm building. That's not a farm stand though.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe different to everyone.
Or, or.
In terms of temporary sign, these carve-outs, for example, you mentioned, uh, you mentioned two.
Realtors and farms.
Are those somewhere else? Are they here? Are, are these temporary sign carve-outs?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, they're, they're.
Cuz I'd just like to.
Permanent signs, like they're the seasonal.
Temporary signs.
I just wanna settle on clean ordinance language we can adopt.
Yep.
Yeah.
That tells the public how easy it is to understand what they're allowed and not allowed to do in terms of temporary signs.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm hoping that we can just settle that tonight and then have a public hearing.
Okay, so I think that all you, what we can do here for realtors, I think they can just lift their signs and move them. For ag, if we give it an extension, we're kind of incentivizing those folks who want to extend it to do it. And if you're on ag and you're not even farming, you'll still be able to do it, but maybe the incentive won't be there and so, there you go.
Where do we, have we contemplated what an extension would require, is it picking up the phone and saying, hey?
Yeah, what is that process?
Well, that's what I was asking, is it just the zoning administrator, I mean, when we, when we write to them and say, hey, you may not know the rules. You're only allowed to have your sign up for ninety days, uh, but you can get a sixty-day extension, okay, I'll take one of those. Why, why are we writing that letter?
I feel like this is dish off of the wall.
It is, we just gotta, like, square footage and time period and.
Should we just?
That's, the, the good cause shown was, was our attempt to put some limits on it, like.
The well zoning administrator, my apples are still in season.
That sounds like a good reason.
How about a hundred? Hundred and twenty days period.
The temporary signs?
Yeah, hundred and twenty days, seventy-five square feet, done, eight feet high.
No lighting.
No lighting, regardless of district.
I would just probably say, let's do ag one twenty and let's do everything else ninety.
There you go.
Alright.
Just cut it clean like that and just say seventy-five.
Going ones.
Sold.
One twenty egg, everything else ninety, seventy-five square feet, in the aggregate, no lighting, eight feet high.
Sold.
Aggregate square footage of all temporary signs to not exceed seventy-five feet.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we direct staff to finalize the ordinance along those specific lines that everyone is now clear on.
This is a sliver of this.
This is exciting.
This is good.
Can't we just, just do that?
Yeah.
Can we just work on this language and then we'll move to the next time, next time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that was, I think, the intent, um.
Yeah, that's what we had planned on doing.
Yeah, and there was temporary signs, off-premise signs, animated signs, folk art, but.
So you're gonna hit those other things later.
So can I move?
That was a motion.
Sure, well, the motion, the motion is hundred and twenty square, maximum hundred and twenty square feet, ag nine, uh.
Hundred and twenty days, I think.
Hundred and twenty days and ag ninety days in other zoning districts. Um, maximum seventy-five square feet, um, maximum height eight feet, no lighting.
Yep.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Gotta move on.
I'm just gonna say that I think some businesses need more time, that's just, that's still in agriculture.
It seems like a kind gentle government here in Rappahannock County.
I, I just hope that we continue to be the kind of sensible place where there's not, I mean, for the amount of, you hardly receive. Any complaints about signs.
I think this'll.
Time enforcement, I think, is, is always gonna be tricky, it's the, you've got.
It's something.
Four hundred square feet of temporary signs that's gonna, you know.
That's what we have right now.
Enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have that now, and it's just like.
It's something.
I think if we make a pretty good faith effort to do something, that's better than.
Oh, but, but, oh, that's only in the context of we're gonna continue to talk about this before we do anything.
I'm sure we're gonna hear ample feedback from the public.
Yeah, there you go.
This, this will at least get people to.
Thinking.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Alright, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
This is exciting.
Do you have a motion to adjourn, I think I heard a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Woo-hoo.
Eight forty-five.